This meeting of the Gadsden City Council now come to order and the Chair calls on City Clerk Ivey Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Councilman Williams is absent today. Councilman Avery?
Here.
Echols?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, the meeting is open for business, and David Lawson will come forward and lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Lord, we're thankful for this opportunity to see the sun rise, and we are thankful to see your blue skies. And we are having our thoughts and our minds focus on those who have suffered during the storms. And we ask that you continue to have your hand in that, provide a source of relief and comfort for those who have been devastated by it. We ask that your hand be continually involved in all levels of our government. We ask that you give our local, our state, and federal leaders the guidance and the wisdom that you would have them to apply to make this a better land and thus a better world. We will be ever grateful and thankful to give you the praise in the name of your Son Jesus. We ask these things, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair Lentana motion to approve the minutes of various work sessions and city council meeting on January the 17th.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair Lentana motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of January the 13th through the 19th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, Mayor.
Yes, we got it. I'd like to ask Craig Scott from the library and Tracy Pondick to come up, please. I have a proclamation that says, "Whereas a federal tax credit known as the Earned Income Tax Credit is available for low-income workers who meet certain qualifications. The Earned Income Tax Credit was first created in 1975 and helps to offset the impact of social security taxes and provides an incentive for work. It is the federal government's largest benefit program for workers. The Internal Revenue Service has estimated that four out of five eligible taxpayers now claim and get their credit. The Internal Revenue Service and its community partners are continuing efforts to increase the Earned Income Tax Credit's participation among taxpayers who are eligible. The City of Gadsden is actively participating in public awareness and education efforts regarding the tax credit as well as free tax preparation sites. Each year a day in January is designated as Earned Income Tax Credit Awareness Day, an effort that is promoted throughout the nation. Whereas the R S V P and the City of Gadsden are co-hosting an Earned Income Tax Credit Awareness Day event at the Gadsden Public Library on January 27th from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Therefore, I sherman got the Mayor of the City of Gadsden to hereby proclaim January 27th, 2012 as Earned Income Tax Credit Day in the City of Gadsden and encourage all of our citizens to learn and understand the requirements and visit a free tax assistance site to see if they qualify for the Earned Income Tax Credit."
Thank you. Thank you for that. The City of Gadsden has always been very generous to us in this program with free tax sites and the space for that, and then also helping us promote Earned Income Tax Credit, which does bring a lot of money into our community. So I just really appreciate it. Thank you.
Mayor, I have a question for Tracy.
Okay.
Do you know, have you got the latest figures as to how much money we are losing every year when it comes down to people not filing for that? I know one time it was a huge amount.
Yeah, I didn't bring that with me. I'm sorry. I know that four out of five people who are eligible do receive it, but there's that fifth person that's not getting their credit.
Yeah, I remember one year that the lady came in and said it was like $14 million left on the table. So I don't know how much we're leaving now, but that's good. The awareness is built up, that's great.
Thank you.
I believe if you make less than $42,000 that you're, and you're employed, I believe you're eligible for that. I believe it's 42,000.
Yeah.
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine, okay. So even more than I thought.
I know it was there, but you know, what was happening, people were filing their income taxes and not filing for that tax credit. And like I said, one time, we, I think it was just the city, I don't think it was the county, I think it was like $14 million in one year that we didn't, they didn't get back as a result of people not claiming that. So it sounds like we've done a great job if we're up to four out of five now that are doing that, so. Thanks to Walt, that was one of Walt Higgins' things that he worked on and worked on and worked on, so we appreciate him for that.
Okay, unfinished business, we have none today. This is a time and place to advertise to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition or to or in favor of an ordinance rezoning property located on Tuscaloosa Avenue in District 3. This was to create a B3 central business district including about 20 acres with the purpose of expanding business opportunities in this area. The Planning Commission voted three to two to recommend the council deny the rezoning. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Would you please come forward to the microphone, please ma'am? State your name and address for the city clerk.
My name is Linda Jones. I reside at 1213 Brookside Drive, and I have property on 915 Tuscaloosa Avenue. I am in opposition because of the fact that I can't see accident people, of course, this is a rental property for me, but there are so many people that have homes that this is their home on Tuscaloosa Avenue. And the problem is that if it's damaged over 50%, then they are not allowed to rebuild. So with that in mind, it makes me be opposed to not being able to have control over my property, even though we pay insurance. And if something happened, who would say that if it's 50% damage, is it the city or our insurance companies? That would cause a conflict. Then too, we won't be able to rebuild, that's going to be a vacant lot if it's over 50%. Tuscaloosa to me would seem like it'd have a lot of vacant lots for the city to take care of if people move away and don't take care of them. Then that would be property turned over to the city. Also, it makes me feel bad to know that people that really, that their, their homes on Tuscaloosa would not be able to rebuild if something happened because things happen all the time. It could be a fire, a tornado, just like that happened in Birmingham and all the surrounding areas now. It would be a shame if those people had to deal also with the prospect of not being able to rebuild their home on account of technicality about rezoning. I'm all for progress, don't get me wrong. If it was for a school, a hospital, a doctor's office, I would be in favor of it. But I can't see no kind of business. I've been here for 50 years, and I'm 64 years old, and I've never seen a business that really stayed on Tuscaloosa that did any prosperous business except for Mr. Donald's radio station and clubs, and we have the new store, which they have almost destroyed, but it's not a place, it always have been a place for, for not large business, but small business owners and people to live. And to me, to ask these people that have inherited their father's homes or their mother's home to give them up to the prospect with someone getting a liquor license to have recreational fun, I just don't think it's right.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to it? Please come, give your name and address for the city clerk.
My name is Clarice Robinson. I live on 9th Street, which is in the 300 feet radius that I received a notice of this change. My problem is that Tuscaloosa is a busy area as it is. There's no parking for businesses, and the property that, where homes were, why can't homes be replaced? And people that live there that are old, if, and you have clubs or other businesses there that may disturb their sleep, why would you want it there? No one across the decency would want noise where it would disturb their sleep. So why should these older people be, be there and have their sleep disturbed because businesses are there or where you have clubs or anything else going on that isn't nice? You have churches there, churches have placed signs on their property now saying cars will be towed if it's not a church function. So you going to put businesses there, especially clubs, where people are going to stagger out all of the club onto church property? I don't think so. No one would want this. And plus the fact, why can't we have an area? If you want clubs, we have property around here, draw up a plan. No plan has been designated. No one has shown us any construction type of what type of businesses will be on Tuscaloosa that would be profitable for the community. Now, if it's just clubs, no. You have churches, you have children that are there, you always saying what the police don't do. You have more police down there if you have that type of business. It would, I don't live there, but I don't want to be awakened in the middle of the night because I hear sirens going. I want to sleep as well. So I think that if you had a plan that you could show it to the people to see what type of business you're going to have, or have Club City somewhere where people can go and enjoy themselves without messing up the communities, it would be a different story. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else? Please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the city clerk.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Leon Harris. I'm here in regards to my father, Lorenzo Harris, that lives at 918 Tuscaloosa Avenue.
Give your address too, though.
And I'm from Montgomery, Alabama. And I resided here years ago, and I live, and with the intent of coming back to Gaston, Alabama. But that didn't come through. But the reason why I'm here and representing my dad is that if we're going to do business on Tuscaloosa, let's do some type of chariot to find out what we are going to have and what we are going to do, and have the community involved in that. Not just to have a nightclub placed here and a nightclub placed there. If you want, like Mrs. Robinson said, if you want a nightclub, they're designated area there on Broad Street. Take it up there. This community have been there for a number of years, and I feel that it should stay. My dad is 91 years of age, lived right next door to the Elks Club. And all the time growing up when I was there, there was shooting, fighting, gambling. And I'm not saying anything wrong with you on bringing business in there on Tuscaloosa, but if we're going to bring business, let's look at a habitat, let's look at a grocery store, let's look at something that's going to build the community versus destroy it and take it down. It's already down. You got vacant lots there throughout Tuscaloosa. What are you going to put there? Space is limited. The property size, they may be 50 feet by 100, 125. Only thing I'm against is having a nightclub next to my dad's house, and he's 90 years old, and someone walking out there with a weapon, shooting, and it may penetrate the house.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Would all the people, even though you might not want to speak, who are against this, would you please stand? I know there's three because I spoke.
I don't think they heard you.
I'm asking that anyone who is opposed to this, would please stand so we know how many people are out there who are against this. Our dad must be against it. Okay. All right, thank you. Now, is there anyone out there who would like to speak in favor of it? Please give your name and address to the city clerk.
I'm Larry Avery, address 1301 Alabama Street. I'm a young business owner, I'm a native also of Gadsden, Alabama, moved away for schooling and experience to Nashville, Tennessee. On the return back to home, taking the opportunity to have a business downtown Gaston, Alabama was an awesome experience. But however, growing up in a area of Tuscaloosa Avenue, from 9th Street even, growing up on Evans Street where my grandmother lived and attending Carver Community Gym, Summer Camp, the area has taken, from my small number of years in the, of living in that area, the area have taken a totally downtroll because of the opportunity of not having, I think in a position like this where businesses can come in and better the area that's causing for housing market to go up even, the community, more people to come in as business owners, as myself. I own a shoe store, a women's shoe store downtown, which is of very interest to me to put an urban store in the area. It's not so much, I believe, that are clubs that are just the idea of wanting to be over that area. I think that no one is, has given the opportunity as such as this amendment to come forth to bring the activity of businesses, businesses over in the area. So therefore, I believe that there are a lot of positive businesses owners, business owners as such as myself, especially small business owners that do want to come in and see the area grow and become better as it once was. I have a family business that was once there of my grandmother's, which is Liz's Barbecue, who moved out of the area due to lack of funding and other activities that wasn't fun for the area because of the situation that it was in. With this, believing that if it passed and goes through, there is a chance to go back into the area. There's a chance for that business to come back, and there's a chance for new growth for that area with businesses. I hear a lot of talk about the nightclubs and whatnot, but I don't think, I think nightclubs has only been the presentation to that neighborhood because as a, as a clothing store owner or as a small retail business, I look at a lot of details around with homes that have been there for many years, no use of residence at all, and continue of deteriorating and no, no substance or a sign of maintain. So therefore, when I, when I look at me bringing a business into the neighborhood and I look at these established homes that are there, what is the, what is the, my question is what is the potential upkeep by that homeowner that will help my business compared to being a eyesore in the neighborhood where my business will also be? So I think there is great potential for business owners, small business owners, to bring a positive business into the neighborhood than so-called the nightclubs or whatnot. There's a lot, there's negatives, negatives with nightclubs as well as there's negatives even with a clothing store or with any business that you bring to the neighborhood. But I think if the community go out and do a little more positive research in bringing businesses also to their, their community, to that neighborhood instead of sitting back and allowing nightclubs to come in or whatnot, then I think more potential business, small business owner, positive small business owners, I guess you would say, will come in and take a more outlook and, and bringing more businesses there in that neighborhood. It's greatly needed, and I'm in favor of it because I think that the neighborhood has great potential to grow. It has been an awesome growing neighborhood before, and I can see it for, within the forthcoming years to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of it? Please state your name and address for the city clerk.
How y'all doing? My name is Bill Avery. I'm from Gaston, Alabama. I'm 64 years old. I've been in Gaston, you know, all my life. I hadn't traveled anywhere else, moved anywhere. I hear a lot of people talking about the clubs and, but the people that came up, you know, I grew up with them, they've been involved in clubs, they even own clubs in other cities. So I'm not going to go into that. But anyway, that, people thinking about the club business because I started out first of trying to open up a club, which I had clubs before on Tuscaloosa Avenue, years ago. Okay, I got another business and I'm opening up now on Tuscaloosa Avenue, getting ready to open up, I got a security door business, I'm not opening up a club. I'm opening a security door business, and I'm being another, I got three businesses already on Tuscaloosa Avenue. There's only five residents right now on Tuscaloosa Avenue, people that live on Tuscaloosa Avenue. Rest of the businesses, people got businesses and stuff, they're trying to upgrade the place. And I don't understand why people would come up and try to stop something because we're trying to make things move forward. You know what I'm saying? And I don't see a lot of trouble on Tuscaloosa Avenue because the policing, things have changed a lot of things on Tuscaloosa Avenue. Tuscaloosa Avenue is, is growing, it's getting better. So we shouldn't keep things down just because you don't live on the, you're in the district, you don't live in the district, you don't hang in the district. I live there in the district. I work there every day in the district. There's nothing wrong with Tuscaloosa Avenue. There's nothing wrong with the people that got business down there. People want to open up a business, they, they putting their money out. They going and trying to, these people are of age. They can't go get a job, and they doing the stuff that they grew up doing to support the place. So that's why I'm saying, I, I feel like that, that we should let this thing go ahead and these few things, people are getting old. Y'all getting old, everybody getting old. So you ain't going to be here all the time. Things got to grow, things got to grow. You can't not keep holding things back. Let things grow. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else who would like to speak in favor of it? I think, Mr. Brezner, I think there's Mr. Donaldson wants to talk about it. He's coming up. Please state your name and address for the city clerk.
My name is Floyd Donal. My address is 815, 813, 819, 821 Tuscaloosa Avenue. That's a strip right there on the corner of Henry Street and Tuscaloosa. I grew up in, in the area. I grew up at, well, before the first set of numbers, it was 537 North 9th Street. By the time I went to college, it was 421 North 9th Street. So I've always been within a stone's throw of Tuscaloosa Avenue. And the Tuscaloosa Avenue that I remember had two furniture stores, four grocery stores, and just, and a jewelry store, and of course, the Elks Lodge and a smaller precept than that. And it had several barber shops. It was a business hub of the black community, second to only 6th Street, North 6th Street. And that was one block of 6th Street, that was from 6 and Broad to Locust and 6. And of course, there between, between 6th Street and Sweet Home Church, there's a location of most black enterprises, most businesses in the town. Now, the Cusse Valley Elks Lodge is not a club, the first thing, it is a lodge. It's the Independent Benevolent Protective Order of the Elks of the world that represents the African-American arm of the IPO, of the white elks. That's what it is. It's the same as you have Prince Lodge with the Masons and so forth. Oh yeah, I missed one business there, the Mason Hall, and of course, Will and Elmas. The street was a beautiful street, and of course, the houses were well maintained, the street was maintained, the businesses were maintained. And of course, when you talk about Lamberts and you talk about all of the business on Tuscaloosa Avenue, it's not always been in shambles. As you had the White Flight, and of course, that does happen, and of course, you leave that part for the black people to squabble over, so to speak. As we look at the downtown area, as it has been rezoned, you have alcohol beverage license next to churches and all through the area, which is no problem. And, and the whole issue of rezoning is not about an alcohol license. There are many, that's why I wanted to bring up the history of the situation. Now, there are many other areas, and of course, people have different ideas, and also we missed Evans Funeral Home on Tuscaloosa Avenue. If I keep thinking there, I'll come up with some more, but a very lively street there from Henry Street School, right on the corner of Henry Street, that was an all-white school, elementary school, and of course, later changed to a black middle school. But again, the fright that I'm hearing this morning there, you know, the city has building code. We have building codes. I mean, you have prerequisites, you, people have to pass exams to get alcohol license. People have to pass the all kind of scrutiny. So to rezone the street doesn't mean that everybody's going to run out with a, and get a whiskey license. There, there's, when we talk about economic development, and then economic development, opportunity, because presently, as we look at the street now, it is horrible. I don't, can't even recognize Tuscaloosa from the time of my growth. It has retrogressed. It has retrogressed to the point, and it's not because of liquor license. There are no liquor licenses there. Now, I had an alcohol license, I had an alcohol license for a club, well, it was, it was a lounge, and I've had a convenience store license, and I've had a wine license right there on where I'm located. And no problems, no problems at all, no break-ins, no criminal investigations, and no mass murder. Any of that has gone on, on my property. And of course, when we look at the responsibility now, it might entail chief more patrol, but we need patrol anyway. And when you begin to look at revenue in the City of Gadsden, there, when you talk about revenue, we don't have an African-American plan, period, that whatever we bring to town would be an asset. And there, when we certainly talk about Tuscaloosa Avenue, it amounts to more. It is opportunity, and one more, there, if you heard Bill Avery and Larry, and there's Councilman Avery on the dais. Now, it's not about Avery, as I've heard so much that Robert is for this situation because of his cousin, that's not true. The, the location is in the Masonic Hall that Bill was talking about when his name was in the paper and so forth. So it's not an Avery problem. And we want to get that straight. You know, people are prejudiced many times when you talk about an Avery problem. You know, people are prejudiced many times when you talk about an Avery problem. I'm a Donald and we never talked about this, but I've seen Tuscaloosa, I know what Tuscaloosa is. And so far, as another myth, any house, anywhere, that is, the majority of the house is torn down, don't we have a 50-foot rule? And it's not just Tuscaloosa Avenue. If your structure is on a 50-foot lot and the majority of that burns, then it's my understanding that you can't come back from scratch anyway. And, and that doesn't just mean Tuscaloosa. There are no exceptional rules for Tuscaloosa Avenue. And certainly, we need to get that and straight and look at the potential, the potential. Nowhere in this city is going to prosper without the support of city council, without the support of its citizens there. When we begin to look at the situation, but to just come back and say, well, I don't want it there because I'm a Christian or because I hear the loud noise or what have you, simultaneously, it's economic times. We have poor economics in the country and in our city, and of course, we need to grow. We need to grow and we need opportunity. We need opportunity and that's one thing the city council has done to the merchants on Tuscaloosa for years and years and years, denied people the right and the opportunity to prosper and to go into businesses of their choices there. Because that has been a serious problem. I'm the exalted ruler of Cusse Valley Elks Lodge. And I've been in Elks Lodge, I guess I'm the oldest member in Elks Lodge and I've been in there and my father was there before. He was the exalted ruler at once before. And the Elks Lodge is a charitable organization. In fact, that's the motto, charity first. And so the misconceptions that we've had, we've had bad behavior in front of the school. We've had bad behavior in front of City Hall. We've had bad behavior. You can't pick when a person is going to cut loose. But let's just dispel of the, of the, all of the stereotypes, you know, as if, you mean to tell me people that five houses, five residents, an opportunity, we probably have more. But again, it takes responsibility and of course, it takes opportunity. And I don't think the city council there and on your planning committee, one more complaint, on your planning committee, please pick people that understand. When you pick people that haven't, don't know a unit about how people survive. And when you pick people that are so distant from planners ought to be planners. You wouldn't pick a farmer to put on a hospital board, would you? But it's amazing there. So we have to burden ourselves with being responsible of what is accomplished in our town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is anybody else who would like to speak in favor of it? For those who, you know, for those who are in favor of it, would you please stay in like we did for the, for the ones that were against it? Okay, thank you. This ordinance has been presented today for the first reading and the council will vote on it next week.
Mr. President, I didn't say this upstairs and I guess we need to go ahead and do it since we got everybody here and don't put it off for another week. So I'd ask for unanimous consent to go ahead and consider this today.
Second.
Just the first reading, yeah.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Make a motion we approve. I want discussion.
Okay, discussion.
Okay. You know, and I appreciate everybody who came up and had an opportunity to talk about, to speak on their feelings and their belief. Let me just say something that I think everybody missed here. Again, we're talking about the future of a community and the viability of a community. A lot of people don't want clubs, a lot of people don't want factories, a lot of people don't want landfills and everything else in their community. But what you've got to look at is the future of that community. Right now, we have more vacant lots on Tuscaloosa Avenue. A lot of those lots are zoned for residential houses that's been torn down. And we have some areas that are zoned for business. I think right now, the majority of that is either B2 or a R2, which is multifamily housing. It presents a problem. I've had several business people to come to me and I can't, well, I won't mention names. But I can tell you, for instance, there, the late, one of, two of the latest businesses who had to come on Tuscaloosa Avenue had to get a special exception because the property that they took up on was residential. So they had to get in there and get a special exception or to try to get it attached to a B2. If you got a B3 zone, which is what downtown Gaston is, there are a number of things that can help that community and help that area. We have a program where we do facade grants and we do a number of other things to businesses in B3 zones. I don't see Tuscaloosa Avenue being any different from downtown Gaston when that, when this is passed or if it's passed. And I see an opportunity to improve our area, to create jobs. There was one gentleman who wanted to open up a business there and I'll tell you, it was a funeral home. And he had a problem because of where the location was. He wasn't going to go through the hassle of trying to get the property rezoned and/or get an exception. And so there are a number of other people who are out there. And Mr. Donald, you left off the jewelry store and the loan business on Tuscaloosa Avenue. There you go. So there's a lot of opportunities out there. And let me say this to Mr. Harris, and I understand where Mr. Harris is coming from. Personally, I think that's probably about the only somebody who has a valid point or contention about being objected to what's going on or what we want to do. And, but we're talking about almost a mile of a street. And the only person who came up, who had a legitimate objection, who lived on Tuscaloosa Avenue was Mr. Harris. Had one person in one mile. And with that, I just think that that's just not feasible to hold up an entire project. I understand where Mr. Harris is coming from, I understand his problem, I sympathize with him, but I can't hold up an entire community on that one individual. The other folks who came up on rental property, folks who live off of Tuscaloosa Avenue, and I just can't see that. You know, if that's the case, I live off of Broad Street, I live off of streets in East Gaston, I don't come up here and complain when something happened over there. You've got to go in those areas. So I'm going to ask this council to pass this and with that, shut up.
Mr. President.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes.
Mr. Donald, I still remember when I was a little kid, my mom and dad would take me down on Tuscaloosa Avenue. There was a place down there that sold ice cream. You remember the name of that place?
It's in the building that I own today, it was right there. You know, they had cleaners there and beauty supply and of course, ice cream parlor right there.
I think he was talking about Miss Christine Jackson's Dairy Queen.
No, we're talking before that.
You're talking before that?
This was in about 63, 64, when I was a little tall.
It was right there in that complex right there.
Okay.
What's his name, Judge, Judge Miller owned that building, I really think.
I was just going to say, I remember once to a month, maybe every couple of weeks, we'd go down there and get ice cream and there's a barbecue place down there back then. And then when he was talking, that would just.
The barbecue place was Long Mile, Sam Long Mile. It was Sam Long Mile. It was located on the corner of Ninth Street and Tuscaloosa Avenue. One side and Sam Long Mile's barbecue stand there. Then there was another barbecue stand at Emmett Street and.
Pipe Shop. There was one on Pipe Shop too, wasn't there?
It was Emmett.
Emmett, yeah, I remember going there. He didn't have a lot of room, but he had some good barbecue. That's all I got.
You know, I have been, having, having had some interest in the Jacksonville area, I have some serious issues here with me, you know, on this, on this proposition. I understand that I will not stand in the way of progress. I understand what it means to have change. I truly do. I empathize, I understand those people who have residences on Tuscaloosa Avenue and their thoughts about them not being able to do what they want to do with that property in the event that we do have a change. I understand that, I truly do. And I'll say this, I second that, I second that motion because I feel like that if the representation in that area wants that, then I will and we will hold him responsible for economic development in that area. If this is only for just a club, period, and there'll be no other economic development, no other businesses or anything else that is derived from this change, then we would have done a disservice to, to the people on Tuscaloosa Avenue. If you challenge those people to bring businesses in, viable businesses, as we have talked about, cleaners, grocery stores, whatever, then I would think that this would be a good thing. I second it because we'll hold you accountable for making sure the economic development arises as a result of if this changes, rezoning.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
I need to respond to him. I agree with what he said.
Absolutely.
And I'm going to challenge him and the rest of this council too. I had a program in place to, to bring in economic development on Tuscaloosa Avenue. I had approximately $250,000 of community development funds. I had negotiated with some of the local banks to put up a half a million dollars to bring businesses on Tuscaloosa Avenue. The previous administration, before Mayor Guyton got in, saw fit that he didn't want that to happen on Tuscaloosa Avenue. So they devised a plan to kill that. I'm going to ask this council, if we do this, to start setting up monies through community development, which we can do, and use those monies as soft seconds and loans to help people go into business on Tuscaloosa Avenue, on Ewing Avenue, on East Broad Street, Forest Avenue and every place else. We can do that if we work together and stop working against each other. So I take that challenge. And I challenge you and the rest of this council too, let's get together and do that.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Call for a question.
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
One abstention.
We have one abstention. Motion carries to adopt.
Okay, our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 320 Springdale Road in District 2. The last known owners are the state of Alabama and Kim F. Park. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is anyone who wishes to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started our case here in April of last year. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Does anyone else wish to speak in favor of it? Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 507 North Ninth Street in District 3. The last known owners is Marvin W. Wright. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, this case involves a burned house. We started it in October of 2010. There have been no improvements, no permits. We're asking today for a resolution to abate.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this, this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Finally.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Before it falls down.
Yeah, it's going to fall in if we don't do something.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on properties located at 909 and 915 Avenue G in District 3. The last known owners are the state of Alabama, Jewel Wilson Ayers, Doris Jean Wilson, Diane Wilson Haslett, Joel Davis Wilson and Arthur Lee Wilson Jr. Is there anyone like, who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor?
This president involves two houses next door to each other owned by the same individuals. We started our case in September of 2010. Been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Same thing, finally.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Finally.
Okay.
I'm sorry the clerk didn't hear me. I said finally, again.
These, the hearings were combined for both items, so is our motion is second to cover both resolutions.
Cover both resolutions, I'm sorry.
Number 12 and 13.
Yes.
Those in favor to adopt both resolutions, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt both.
Our final public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 409 North 34th Street in District 7. The last known owners are the state of Alabama, James Griggs, the Jesus Named Church. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, we started this case in June of 2009. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve as of today. We're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of it?
Brian, was this a church at one time?
No, it was a church hall.
Huh?
It was a church hall.
Oh, okay.
Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I know, I want to just say this, and Brian, for the people out there who have these problems in their community, and I've had two or three houses that we're still working on, if you notice, he said that we started this case in 2009. The case prior to that, we started in 2010. These things don't happen overnight. So I just hope that people understand that. Sometimes there's a lot of legal wrangling you have to go through and a lot of other issues. And people get impatient when they've got a house next door to them that needs to come down or cross the street. So I just want to remind people that these things take time. We, we've gotten into a situation, and our city attorney can tell you, we've had to pay for some houses that we towed down that we shouldn't have. So we just want to make sure that we don't have to go back and pay people when we tear these houses down or when we abate the nuisance. So I just appreciate your work and hope that people understand it takes time sometimes.
Any other discussion?
Yes, sir. And at the same time, you know, Rob, that's a very good point. Don't let that, don't let that deter you from wanting to get rid of blight in your neighborhood. Don't, because it may take a little longer. Go through the process anyway so that we can get rid of it.
Right. Any other? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
15 is a resolution awarding bid number 3193 for rehabilitation of 48 East Wilkerson Avenue. Avenue. The purchasing department is recommending awarding the bid to Blackhawk Contractors, and the amount is $7,210. Chair, will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed?
Abstain.
One abstention. Motion carries to adopt.
Sixteen is a resolution issued grant from state of Alabama EMA. This is a U.S. Department of Transportation hazardous materials emergency preparedness grant for training exercises from December the first, 2011, through September the first, 2012. The amount is $2,020 with a 20% match of 505. Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Seventeen is an ordinance amending fiscal year 2012 budget. This is to reflect receipt of a grant, funds for a grant approved in the previous resolution. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, I'd ask for unanimous consent to go ahead and consider this today.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
Make a motion we approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
New business? Is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have about four. The first one I'd like to begin with is Legal Department. I asked for unanimous consent. Please also on this is Legal Department number 033. It's authorizing agreement with Reagan Park Licensing Agreement. This is to put a monument up at the City-owned gazebo in Alabama City honoring Billy E. Reagan, who was a man director and also helped make Guess and the City of Champions.
Second.
You want to do all four unanimous?
This is, there's other three different ones than this.
I know, but you want to get all four unanimous now and then come back and do them individually? That'd save us some time.
Yeah, I can. We can do it that way.
If you don't mind, I've got a tea time.
Okay. And the next one is, I asked for unanimous consent also. It's 036, authorizing settlement agreement with General Lease with Alfredo Construction Company regarding the airport road project. And the next one is 037, authorizing a change order number two for improvements to the airport road in an amount of $247,224.12 for a total project cost of $3,131,469.15. And also, the last one is Legal Department 035, authorizing agreement amendment with Jones, Bear, Waterford, Tucker for construction engineering inspection service on airport road. Amendment includes additional time and service rendered by the consultant and subconsultants included in the original contract.
You got a second?
Those in favor to consider all four resolutions today, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed? Consent has been granted to consider all four.
I'd like to ask for a move, please.
To all four?
Yeah.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all four resolutions, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt all four.
Any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a resolution that I would like to introduce today for unanimous consent to consider. It's a resolution authorizing agreement with Sprint for 12 Samsung Galaxy tablets to a two-year service plan in an amount of $359.88 a month.
In a second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir. These were, this type of communication will be used on our transportation system here in the city.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business? Department of Parks Committee's boards amended the U from our library board. And as our library director.
Thank you so much. I just have a couple of things that I wanted to say, and I'll keep it quick because my stomach's starting to growl, and I'm sure other people are a little hungry, too. First, I wanted to mention that we've got a series of really great programs coming up in February that kind of ties along with our Earned Income Tax Credit Day. We're doing Financial Freedom Fridays in February. It'll be at noon every Friday in February. We're going to start with this first Friday being our earned income tax. That's not exactly February, but we're going to transfer the next Friday. It's going to be on tax preparation, how to make sure that you don't lose money preparing your taxes, all the tips and tricks that are available that sometimes people forget because we pay into them and we want to make sure we get as much out as we can. The next Friday, we're going to be doing a series about fixing your credit. Some of us have been hard hit by the recession and the different economic problems that we faced in the United States. What do you do if your credit's a little bad? How do you get it back up? Because you can do research, and one place will tell you to do this, and another place will say never do that. So we want to get some good advice on that. The third week is going to be about teens and credit. When teens start getting jobs, the city of Gadsden last year did such a great program, getting teens their first jobs and helping them get experience in the workforce. How, as parents, do we equip our teens to make good financial choices from the very beginning, and especially when they go away to college? All those free credit cards come in, and it's so easy to make bad decisions. We want to make sure that our teens go out into the world with good decisions from the beginning and don't ever have to take the class before that about fixing your credit. And then our last class is going to be about retirement, planning for retirement. If you don't have retirement in the business that you're in, depending on where you are and your stage at life and what you want to be able to retire with, what are your options and how do you need to go about making that happen so that you can retire and enjoy your life? We've also got, as all of you got today, we've got our big read that's coming up. It's kicking off very soon. It's called The Things They Carried with Tim O'Brien. It's a series of short stories, fictionalized but based on his time with his group and the Vietnam War. So it's a good book. It's got, we've got a lot of really wonderful programs. We're partnering not only with the city, but Gadsden State, University of Alabama, Cultural Arts Center. So we've got a lot of stuff to look forward to with that, and you can come get the books from the library at any time we're already ready. But the exciting thing is that we are finally finished with all of our RFID stuff, the grant that you guys approved for over $100,000 for us to be able to make sure that all our books are kept safe and that our system is a little bit more efficient and we're able, we just finished that up last week. And I appreciate the public's patience having to go from one library to the other depending on when we were closed, but we have a brand-new East Gadsden Library in a beautiful location, and the city Public Works Department really did a phenomenal job. Some of the nicest guys you could ask for and really worked really hard to make that location look beautiful. It is right next door to the Family Success Center there on East Broad. So a lot of people don't realize that it's there yet, but you park in the back next to the nice trolley stop that we have, and you'll go in and see all of our new materials and our new systems set up. We want to invite everybody next Tuesday at 1:00 to an open house. We want to invite all the council to come in and see what we've been able to do with it, and we hope to be able to partner with all the organizations that are on that, around that East Broad location and do some really good things in that community and build up the community and start some exciting programs. So we're really happy about that, and I wanted to thank you and the mayor for being able to make that possible because it's, it looks really, it's really something for people to be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Department of Parks Committee's board remarks by the mayor and the council. Roberts, you want to start?
Yes, Mr. President, I appreciate that. I was jokingly a few minutes ago about a tea time, but there's a tea-off time as far as basketball, a tip-off time. I'm going over to Atlanta to my granddaughter's basketball game, and we're going, we had planned to leave about 12:00, so I had to go first.
A little after.
That's a little after 12:00, but I didn't, I forgot about all this stuff going on here. Several things I wanted to get in right quick. I might have to leave before everybody make their comments, and I know the mayor's going to talk about some things later, but I just wanted to give credit to the group that did our refound our barns. They did one heck of a job. I know the mayor's going to be making that announcement in a few minutes, so I just wanted to say how much I appreciate, well, I start to say Governor Folsom, but Folsom and the company and a number of other individuals, our city attorney who got the work out and everything, so we really appreciate them on that. And like I said, the mayor will be making an announcement on that. I didn't go into a lot of details about what I tried to do before, and hopefully with this council and this administration, we can do this. I had talked to several banks. As a matter of fact, I had commitments from four banks to put up a half a million dollars for a total of $2 million, and we wanted, I was getting $250,000 of community development funds. And what we were going to do is to use that money as soft money for people who want to go into business on Tuscaloosa Avenue. And we can do the same thing throughout this city. We can put community development funds in a pot and designate certain areas and talk to these bankers, and they'll be willing to do that and to help us with economic development in certain areas. I talked about Tuscaloosa Avenue. I talked about Ewing Avenue, Wall Street, and those places. It can be done, ladies and gentlemen. It's just that we need to cooperate. Again, when I tried to do it for just Tuscaloosa Avenue, the guy who was here prior to the mayor we have now, I think, saw it as a political thing and thought I would have an advantage. It wasn't about an advantage. It was about trying to promote my community and try to help my community advance. It's what I'm trying to do today. And hopefully, this council will see fit and this administration will see fit to come back with that plan, and let's include a number of streets as opposed to just Tuscaloosa Avenue. It can be done, and I hope we'll do that since I've got a commitment from Councilman Harris, and I just need two other folks to commit to do that, and we'll do that. We'll take $250,000. I know Nick don't want it, but we'll take $250,000 from community development and set up that fund and allocate it for certain communities, for businesses who want to go, people who want to go into business. Again, I, Mr. Harris, I understand your problem. And by the way, you jumped on me about the cover for your bus stop again upstairs today. I got all these guys as witnesses. I jumped on the man who's supposed to put it in, and he said it was a money problem. I think the mayor has committed now to go ahead and come up with the money. I told him if I had to, I'd take it out of my discretionary money. I wanted one on the corner of Tuscaloosa Avenue where you have a lot of times, I see you out there trying to catch the trolley and you're wet, but there's also another serious problem right there on Sixth and Tuscaloosa Avenue where the kids try to catch it. I've been trying to get a trolley cover there for I don't know how long. I think I got a commitment, I hope I did, that I, this mayor, did I get a commitment? Okay. I'm putting it out publicly. I got a commitment from the mayor this time to get it for you. Okay. Again, yeah, I know. It's been longer than that, Mr. Harris. We've been working on this thing. Government works, but it works slow. I just want you to know that. And again, I apologize. I understand your situation, but again, I just couldn't see holding up an entire project for you, and I sympathize with you. And again, I think I just made your property a little bit more valuable, so you might want to talk to the folks next door and see if they're willing to buy it. That's all I have.
Okay. I'm going to let the mayor go next since Roberts told him about the barns.
I didn't tell him about the barns. I just said I...
Hey, Robert, before the, before the mayor goes, Robert, I think you've got a commitment from four of those upstairs, two for Walnut Park and two for your district.
Oh, okay. All right.
Just want to make sure on that.
Okay.
You want to record the show that goes forward, right, John?
Yeah, we may have to have a roadblock.
I won't try to stay.
I got to, I've got an engagement to speak to the women's club, and they always have good food at 12:00, so I'm going to have to go. Since the interest rates have been so low, we started looking at refinancing some of our bond issues a few months ago. We hired Raymond James Public Finance Division, and we sort of got ready and had a minimum of about 3% savings or whatever we'd try to refinance some of it, if it got to that. Well, on Thursday, January the 19th, the city of Gadsden went to the market to refinance $29 million in bonds, which resulted in a net savings to the city of, don't hold your breath now, $1.6 million. It's six...
Particularly when we were talking about hopefully we can get $600,000 out of it.
I know. And, you know, we will receive about a million and $60,000 upfront and a long-term savings of about $540,000. All in all, the true interest cost on the new bonds is 3.41%, which is amazingly low. And I would like to get Frankie Davis Economic Development to stand up. He's been sort of watching this for a good while. Stand up, Frankie. I know you don't like to, but... Shane Ellison, who works in the mayor's office for me.
Put him on camera.
Right. And Lisa Rosser, sort of known as Dr. No, but she's a good one. These were the main three, along with the city attorney Roger and the group with the public finance division, Raymond James and former Governor Folsom. But anyway, that is an amazing thing. They said that was the lowest rates had been in 40 years, and it all happened with, one day was at about $600,000, and by the next day it closed with at $1.6 million. So that was just amazing. We had, we had to designate what it would be for, and we're using part of it for riverfront development. We don't have any development in mind, but we have a lot of things circling at different times, so we'll be ready when it decides to land. Also, we're going to be giving the Gadsden City Board of Education, some of the money was money that we were involved with, with them to purchase about $160,000 to purchase iPads for the rest of the elementary schools, fourth and fifth graders. We started a project last year at Thompson Elementary, and it is really, really working well on the kids. It's just amazing. You see them involved. They're not back there throwing paper and doing that kind of stuff. They all have an iPad, and it's working really good. A major component of getting this ready, we had to be rated by Moody's Investment Services, and I'm proud to say we received a good rating, which is due part of us having adequate financial reserves. And thanks to the fiscal restraint of both the administration and the council, we've been able to really watch our money the last few years. So this is really good news for the city, and I want to give everybody a hand that was involved in it. Thank you very much.
Good, Mayor. You did good, Mayor.
Amen.
I had good help.
Yeah, any of you directors that want to go ahead and put in your bid for how to spend that money, we'll just go ahead and give it to the mayor. Billy?
Thank you. That's an example of, that's just one example, how the city and how your city council and your mayor and your representatives, you know, here in city government is looking out for your funds and your monies and your treasures. You know, like Robert said, we had said, put a benchmark, and if we were, if we could save $600,000, the trigger would be $600,000, and we would refinance. But you know, when we refinance, it's a million, you know, that's a great thing, and it's just an example, like I said, of how the city is attending to your financial affairs here. Now, I like to say I had a District One meeting last night, very interesting, had good attendance. All I can say on that situation is stay tuned because there's something happening potentially, you know, in the city of Gadsden, and we're looking at it. But stay tuned to get more information about that process that we discussed last night in District One. Beautiful weather. Everybody enjoy yourselves. That's all I've got.
Mayor.
I don't have anything I want to add to. It's a little after 12:00, so I have nothing to say.
Yeah, they close it, too. They close it, too, not to go ahead.
I don't have nothing, David, Mr. President.
Dean, you can have something.
What? I can't say anything?
You've got to have something.
Oh, okay. I was so glad to hear waterfront development. We've been, ever since I've been here in '94, we talked about waterfront development, and hopefully that's going to become a reality. Next is continuous water over the falls. And if I hadn't said that, my coffee club buddies are probably going to kill me. But that's something I'm looking forward to, that we're going to really have to work on for tourism and the whole.
That's a big, big problem.
That's a big problem, and I believe we can tackle it now. No problem. That's all I have.
I'll entertain a motion. We adjourn.
So moved.